Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Nappany regular session of council for the 24th day of October 2024. I'd like to remind everybody that this evening's meeting is being recorded and live streamed to the Town of Greater Nappany YouTube channel. Before we get started, I just want to comment with respect to an incident that happened earlier in this week. As most of you are aware, many of us woke up Monday morning expecting go to work to do our weekly jobs, studies and chores as we do every single day. Unfortunately, yesterday, many of us were awakened to the sad news that a local landmark in our community had been destroyed. The facility now known as Lennox Agricultural Memorial Community Center, or maybe more commonly known to many of us as the old arena, was engulfed in flames in the early morning hours of the 23rd of October 2023. Thankfully, due to the dedicated work of our local firefighters, assisted by the Loyalist Township Emergency Services and the Kingston Fire and Rescue Services, the blaze was contained to the old arena without destroying nearby facilities or residences. The work conducted by our firefighters and neighbors should be highly commended. This blaze had the capabilities of spreading uncontrollably through our community and could have caused extensive damage, but more importantly, loss of life. And of course, there were many town staff from Public Works, Utilities and Command Staff behind the scenes, ensuring that our firefighters had the capabilities to fight this blaze. I can't stress enough the exemplary job conducted by our staff to protect our community, and for that, I would like to thank them. For many from outside our community, the destruction of a 70-year-old cinder block building well past its prime may not be such a big deal unless you're from Nappany. Many of us, myself included, grew up inside this facility. It raised us, it molded us and provided us with a place to go, a place to meet friends, neighbors, a place where all the troubles from a demanding world could be left behind. It was a safe place where kids could be kids, a place where parents were comfortable dropping their kids off, knowing they were safe and having fun. Even after its predecessor, the Strathcona Paper Center replaced the old arena in 2004, the old arena continued to get back to our community. Taken over by the Fair Board, the facility was repurposed to host a variety of events and functions, still giving back to our community long after the ice pad was removed. It accepted newcomers to our community as well as those that were born and raised here. It provided the same comforting atmosphere for almost 70 years as it did in 1955. I apologize if I'm making this sound like the loss of an old friend, but it really is. A friend that stood by many of us through thick and thin, giving without asking for anything in return. A friend that made each and every one of us succeed. The old arena's legacy is now in the hands of the authorities. Authorities I know and trust will provide closure, closure that this will allow our community to move forward. And forward we will. We're a resilient community. We will overcome this and to be a better community for it. We will ensure our community is supported the same benefits those before us worked hard to provide. We are a community that cares about who we are today and tomorrow. We are a community that will bond together to ensure that we provide the best for those that live, work and retire here. In closing, I want to thank again the men and women of our emergency services and staff as well as our neighbors that in a time of need, supported our community and kept us safe. For that, I thank you. So we'll move on to the regular session of council. I'll look for, I'll call the meeting to order and I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? And I believe there is, Counselor Norrie?
5.1.3. I'm a parishioner at that church and have donated for many years financially, so I'll have to leave the room.
Great, thanks, Counselor Norrie and Counselor Hicks.
Thank you for the same reason. I'll excuse myself.
Great, thank you. Next up is the public meeting under the Planning Act. Look for a resolution to convene the public meeting, moved by Counselor Penal, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. And I see we do have some people in the body of our council chambers. Is there anybody here to speak for or against anything with respect to our, our public meeting? Seeing none. I see Michael Nobes. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, worship. The public meeting this evening is a public meeting under the Planning Act for consideration of a proposed industrial community improvement plan. This evening, we're intending to hear comment from council and if there are any members of the public that wish to make any remarks regarding the proposed plan, they would be welcomed by staff this evening. If there are no comments ready this evening from members of the public, they can be sent to myself following this meeting and they would be incorporated into a final recommendation report and a final draft of such community improvement plan. The purpose of this industrial CIP, as they're commonly referred to, is really to help address barriers to the cost of development of industrial lands. The intention is really supported by our official plan and the intention is to entice it in investment and development by reducing the costs, the upfront costs surrounding industrial, large-scale development. It's intended to really stimulate new investment and job creation within the town. And it does align with the town's strategic plan that was adopted in 2022. That plan has a vision for an active and vibrant community inspired to create opportunities for current and future residents. So this is really in line with the, the goals and objectives of our, our in effect strategic plan. The CIP really is, is a tool to support investment and development that results in an increase in property assessment, supports municipal fiscal accountability and the long-term return on investments and grows the non-residential municipal tax base. It helps provide financial incentives programs that are attractive to potential investors, but are balanced with the financial limitations and expectations of taxpayers and the town's ability to fund the financial incentive programs themselves. This program would be revenue neutral since the grant does not come out of the existing tax base, but rather it would be leveraging future monies being paid by these industrial partners of ours that this would be our future revenue that would be coming in that would help, that would be used effectively to offset those initial costs. And I'll get into those details momentarily. So the town staff have been working in concert with County of LNA staff and we've really been following the lead of Loyalist Township and their recent successes with attracting a very large-scale development that was announced late last week. An initial feedback that we've received from potential large-scale investments has been very positive. So staff have been holding several pre-consultation meetings that have been facilitated by Invest Ontario. They're aware that the town is considering this, this community improvement plan and it, and we're really on the radar of our provincial partners with regard to locating large-scale future industrial projects. So the plan really is broken down into a number of areas that you need, you know, a set of criteria effectively and effectively what it, what it boils down to is are the lands that are being developed zone for industrial uses. And it's applicable to all lands that are zoned industrial in the town. We have a very large industrial park located along Goodyear Road in that vicinity, but there are pockets of small, smaller parcels, legacy zoning on some parcels outside of that area that may be able to leverage this, this, this plan if they were to, you know, have a large-scale addition put on, on a building that exists already and have a certain employment count associated with that. So what, what staff have considered as criteria for being able to take advantage of, of such plan is that the land again be zoned for industrial use. The estimated costs of the development or redevelopment of the property results in an increase in assessed value and property tax revenue for the property. And that the, the construction, the project value must exceed a minimum of 10 million and lead to minimum of 25 full-time jobs associated with that, with that project specifically. Staff, after release of the draft and during writing of the staff report that will be considered later on, considered a sliding scale approach. So this is really aimed at very large projects, but there could be consideration for smaller scale projects, for example, with potential reduced incentive amounts effectively. So that's contained within, within the report and we can speak to it now or we can, we can wait till the staff report portion, but, but what I am looking for is some direction from council with regard to, you know, is there an appetite to provide incentives for smaller scale projects or do we really want to focus solely on large-scale, you know, very large-scale industrial development? Effectively, that, that's what staff are proposing this evening is that we, we, you know, continue on this path that we solicit feedback from the public, solicit feedback from council. Go back and make any amendments to the plan based on this, this conversation this evening and come back to council on November 28th with a final draft. What we have as our incentive as drafted currently, which could be amended with the sliding scale approach that I spoke to, we're looking at, for a project that would qualify with a minimum $10 million project value and minimum 25 full-time jobs is that in year one of project completion, so in year one of operation, 100% of that tax bill effectively is, is re-bated back to the proponent. In year two, 75%, year three, 50% and year four, 25% and then in year five thereafter, they're paying full pop. The proponent would have to pay their taxes to the municipality, then make an application to the town for consideration of a community that effectively qualifying under this plan and consideration of council for approval of this, this tax increment grant framework effectively. So stats that, that this is the, these are the values effectively that Loyalist has been using and they've seen good successes with it. But again, I am looking for I guess confirmation from council that, that these, this criteria is what you'd want to see in the plan itself. And that those percentages on a year one through five basis makes sense, but also have consideration for smaller scale projects. And for example, just a, just some thoughts that I had that are included in the staff report, you know, a smaller scale project could be a minimum $3 million valuation with five jobs. And that incentive could be, you know, 50% of your, your tax bill for year one and two, and that's it. Moving up the chain, it could be a $5 million project with 10 full-time jobs. In year one and two, you get a 50% rebate and then in years three and four, it's 25%. And then after that, it would be meeting the full criteria of 10 million and 25 full-time jobs. So curious to he, to hear council's feedback in that regard and certainly be open to any questions that council might have.
Thanks, Michael. I'm wondering, and I know we're going to have a bunch of questions. And, and we're more than, I, I don't care whether we, we deal with the sliding scale now or if we wait until the staff report, I think it's, which is under 8.1, it may be easier to wait with respect to the sliding scale. Once we have the report in front of us, but if we want to deal with that right now, I'm more than happy to do that, but I'll, I'll start with some questions. We'll see where it goes. Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
I totally agree with it. It's bringing us up to date and enticing a large industry and because the large industrial tax base is, is the one that pays the bills. So, no, and the sliding sale, I'm totally in favor of that. I assume that you've already, Mike, you've talked to other municipalities, what the small, even the smaller range that we're can, you're comparative with other municipalities are doing. Because if you can move just down the road and you don't have to pay any of your taxes for their first year in your industrial tax, guess where everybody would be moving. So we have to be, you know, competitive throughout Ontario. And as long as we're competitive, then we're, we're coming, that's on the right track.
Three worship, just a response. So Loyalist CIP that they have in effect is really just, it, it's got one, I guess threshold per se, it doesn't have a tiered approach like this. Their value, their, their CIP was enacted a couple of years ago and I think they have a fairly low threshold. So many projects could qualify for it. Staff think, you know, with the 10 million and 25 full-time jobs, you know, that's a substantial project. They're getting substantial incentives and it's really giving that greater incentive for the larger project is really also for the greater good of the municipality, right? Like in the long run, we would have greater benefit by, you know, effectively giving up a little at the front end, but recouping it over the long run. So yes, it's a, it's a competitive, competitive approach effectively.
Yep. Thanks, Counselor Shank, Counselor Penal.
Thank you, worship. Through you, Michael, great plan. You know, we've talked about this and we've had an industrial land for quite a while and now it's time to, to, to get somebody to buy it and develop here and set up the shop here, which is a fantastic idea. My question to you, and, and we have had some traction late of late, which is great. My question to you is, is there some kind of mechanism built into the CIP where whether it's council or staff that has a little bit of flexibility on those guidelines? So what happens if it's 9.5 million or, or only nine people instead of 10 people, 10 employees or?
Yep. Through your worship, it would be written with a little bit of flexibility in mind where, you know, you can round up slightly in the, in those, you know, you're just under the threshold limits. There is that flexibility, you know, ultimately it's council's decision. Having a CIP in place is the tool to allow council to, to pass over these incentives. Whether, whether a proponent is ultimately meeting the criteria or not is up to council's discretion. So yes, there will be flexibility built in, in that regard.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Penal. Is there any other questions or comments for Michael at this point? Go ahead, Counselor Mark.
Yeah, Michael, I, I totally agree with what you've done there. You've done a good job on this report. We do have to compete with, I mean, if we're talking major projects and, you know, we lose one because we're not in a competitive field, we, you know, that would, that would be a crying shame. So we want to encourage companies to come here and I agree 100%. We've, we've got to give the same incentives, if not more than other communities to attract them. So yeah, thumbs up.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there any other questions or comments? No, thank you, Michael. And when we get to 8.1, I'm sure we're going to give you, as you probably can see, where we've, we're heading in a direction to give you some guidance with respect to the draft plan. I, I concur with everybody that, that's spoken here tonight. This is important to our community. It's important to draw large and small industry to our community. And I think this is a tool that we can use to do that. So thank you for doing that. And I don't think we're venturing out on any thin ice anywhere because a lot of other municipalities around us are doing the same thing or have done the same thing. So thank you for doing that and we'll, we'll speak again at number 8.1. So is there anybody in the body of the council chambers that would like to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion for the, to, to resolution to adjourn the public meeting, moved by Counselor Penal, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Deputations, we've got a couple of deputations this evening. The first up is Atura Power, B E S S Phase Two and Generating Station Expansion. And I believe we have Mr. Tom Patterson coming in via Zoom land. And we do have some people here in the body of the council chambers to assist as well. So we'll just, Kylie, if you want to bring Tom in, that'd be great. And maybe, maybe we're waiting for Tom. We'll just get the names of you folks that are sitting here and you maybe just a brief description of who you are.
Sure. I'll start. My name's Julia Parker and I'm a project manager with the business development team at Atura Power.
Kevin Ho, Senior Business Development Officer, working with Atura Power.
Great, thanks, Julie and Kevin. And it looks like we're getting close to getting Tom in here.
And I just wanted to note that we have our colleague here, Tom Fletcher.
Oh, great, great. Okay, welcome, welcome, Tom. Thanks, Kylie. There's no hurry. We'll get him into the, into the machine here as soon as we can. There we go. Welcome, Tom. Can you hear us here in Nappany?
Yes, good evening. I apologize for that. A little bit of a technical glitch on my side.
You, you sound like me. I, it's usually user error, so.
I'm not sure what I did anyways.
Yeah, yep, not a problem, Tom. We're going to hand the floor over to you and I see we do have a presentation on the screen in front of us as well. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor Richardson and council for hosting us this evening. My name is Tom Patterson. I'm the Vice President of Energy Markets and Electricity Growth at Atura Power. And in the room with yourselves, I've got two colleagues, Julia Parker and Kevin Ho, joining us for this presentation. This evening, we'd like to take you through to energy infrastructure opportunities that we're pursuing adjacent to the Nappany Generating Station. That includes the natural gas expansion of the Nappany Generating Station as well as a battery energy storage system. If I can flip to slide two, that would be great. Just a little bit of a background about Atura Power. We're a subsidiary of Ontario Power Gen, which is the publicly owned power generating utility in Ontario. Our focus at Atura Power is the safe and reliable operation of combined cycle generation technologies. We own four facilities across the province. As you're aware, the Nappany Generating Facility just south of where you are, plus three other facilities across the province. In addition to natural gas facilities, we're in the clean fuels business with an emerging and growing business with respect to hydrogen. So we're, you know, we're very interested in, you know, focus on decarbonization of the broader economy. And, you know, I think we're trying to do our part with both clean fuels and safe, reliable operation of a natural gas facilities. If I could go to slide three, you know, I think what's really important for us is our relationships with our host communities. And I think we're really quite proud of our engagement as a, and supportive partner in the Greater Nappany area. And over the last two years, we've been able to invest about $250,000 in local initiatives. We have an existing agreement with the town of Nappany and some of the items that we've highlighted here, you may be aware of our investments that we've made, particularly with respect to the Lennox and Addington Hospital, with respect to the Royal Canadian Legion Branch, Softball Nappany, the Harmony Club and so forth. You know, I think we've, we have, you know, we're proud of our relationships and we're really excited to continue to grow these relationships. And it's a really, it's a, it's a core strategy for us as we look at growing out our clean energy infrastructure business across the province. If I could go to the next slide, the, the next few slides you can, could be read and then perhaps some folks have gone through them, but slides four through seven are just a little bit of a backdrop of the project need. And so just sort of setting the, the table here for context, the ISO, which is the Independent Electricity System Operator, which manages the, the high voltage grid and the dispatch of facilities to produce power in the province. They've identified an emerging capacity need due to load growth as well as resource retirements and refurbishments that are underway. The IESO has positioned itself for a significant energy transition as we look to decarbonize sectors of the economy over the coming decades. And currently what the ISO is procuring is new capacity resources, including storage and non-storage facilities. In the current procurement that we're speaking to this evening, the IESO is looking for 2,500 megawatts or 2,500 megawatts of new resources. Specifically, they're looking for 1,600 megawatts of storage and 900 megawatts of non-storage, or that would be effectively a natural gas expansion facilities. These are the resources that are over and above commitments that they made in previous procurements, one in which closed earlier this year where we were successful in securing a contract for the Nappany Battery Energy Storage Facility. These new capacity resources are critical for reliable grid operations. If I can actually just scroll through to the next slide, please. You know, new capacity, they're critical for the reliable operations. Storage allows for the, particularly the storage allows for the shifting of excess clean energy resources during periods of low demand and then allows that energy to be put back on the grid during periods of high demand. The non-storage facilities, i.e. natural gas, support peak demand needs and operational flexibility, particularly during periods where intermittent renewable resources are unavailable. This has the benefit of operating, they have the benefit of operating reliably over longer time scales during peak summer and winter conditions. And if you, we can scroll to the next slide, you can sort of get a flavor for some of the conditions where it's really important for natural gas to be on the grid. So I think on the left, you can sort of see a week, a day in January. And so what we're showing on these graphs are the various resources in the province. And we first start off on the bottom where we have nuclear resources, which is our baseload supply. Then you have hydro facilities, which is the next, the gray bar. And then you have wind and solar in the yellow or the green. And then what you are filling in with is our supply like natural gas to then follow the, the actual demand of the system. And so without natural gas, the supply-demand would not have been met on, on the day of January 27th. And then another really strong benefit for natural gases, you know, if you look to the July 4th chart, is days where there is very limited amount of renewables and there's high demand. And you can sort of see that natural gas is truly the resource to meet that peak demand on those hot summer days. If I could go to the next, not the next slide, but the slide after that, if possible. Thank you. I just want to sort of touch on a little bit of, you know, where does Ontario fit in the, in the global context with respect to its electricity grid? You know, Ontario today has the benefit of a very diverse supply mix of resources, including nuclear, hydro, renewables and flexible natural gas. Ontario's grid today is 94% emission-free. And if I can go to the next slide. And if I can go to the next slide. Electricity represents approximately 24% of all of Ontario's energy supply. And through electrification, there are opportunities for us to displace emissions. And with respect to the current footprint of emissions, you can sort of see the pie chart on the right, where electricity represents 2% of the current emissions in the Ontario economy. And one of the focuses that we're seeing over the next couple of years is increased electrification to support decarbonization of other sectors, including industry, transportation, building, heating and so forth. I think that's really going to be the focus of the next couple of decades as we try to achieve a net zero economy by 2050. If I could go to the next slide, I think I wanted to specifically sort of get into the projects that we're here to discuss at a very high level this evening. The first project that we want to talk about is the Napanee Generation Station Expansion. This will be a hydrogen-ready, natural gas-fired, simple-cycle combustion turbine generator unit. This will be sited on lands to the west of the existing Napanee Generating Station, on OPG Lennox Generating Station lands. The size of the facility is approximately up to 450 megawatts. And there is that, this expansion will, will not require any sort of changes to previously zoned areas. If I can go to the next slide, we've got a little bit of a diagram of the, the Napanee Best project. On the right, you can sort of see a rendering of what the project is. And what we're showing here is both the Phase One and the Phase Two project. So the Phase One project are the batteries that are on, call it the left side of the image. And then the Phase Two will be the batteries on the right side, which are sort of, I guess, sort of rotated nine degrees from the presentation of the other batteries. So this would basically allow this facility to expand from 250 megawatts to a total of 500 megawatts with an incremental 250 megawatts of storage facilities. It will involve the same technology that we're proposing for the Phase One project. And it's on lands that are adjacent to the east of the existing Napanee Generating Station. So this just gives a flavor of sort of the engagement timelines for the project. You know, so what we've done is, is we've gone public with these initiatives, you know, a couple of weeks ago at the start of October. Just last week, we did have a community meeting where we presented the opportunities and we had approximately, I would say, 30 or so people, maybe less than 30 or so at the, the meeting last week where we took some feedback and some input on that. And our intention is to address all of the questions that we heard in that meeting. And we will provide sort of follow up on our website in the, in the coming days. We're here this evening to introduce the project. You know, our intention is to seek a municipal support resolution from the town of Napanee. And we'll be working over the next couple of weeks to, you know, develop a, a community investment agreement with the economic development team at Napanee over the coming weeks ahead of that potential next meeting with council, where these opportunities will be further discussed and where we understand a potential support resolution could be made available. So our, you know, our intention is to bring forward a comprehensive proposal to the economic development team in the coming days. And we're looking forward to further discussions in that regard. You are, you know, what we are really pushing towards now is the, the RFP bid date. And that will, is a date that we're shooting for in the mid-December timeframe, where both the Napanee Gas Expansion and the Napanee Best Phase Two would be submitted to the IESO for consideration. I think just lastly, as we look forward to the overall project, you know, the, the RFP that we're talking about here with respect to the IESO closes towards the end of this year. We are expecting that contracts will be offered in May of 2024. And our intention would be to start construction sometime in 25 with commercial operations being achieved in the middle part of 2027. We'll be undertaking specific permitting activities for particularly the Napanee Gas Expansion. And we are in the process of permitting both the Phase One and the Phase Two elements of the Napanee Best Project. You know, we, we did take a look at the agenda of council and we did notice that there was a letter brought forward by a resident of the community. And, you know, I think we, we are reviewing that letter and our intention would be if, if it's sufficient for council is to take an undertaking to provide written feedback to that comment that was received through the weekend. And I think with that, I, I've opened the floor for any questions at this point. Again, I'd really like to thank the opportunity to present this opportunity to the town of Napanee. We really look, cherish our relationship with the town of Napanee, with the Napanee Generating Station and are looking forward to a collaborative effort here in the coming, coming years to develop clean infrastructure for the province of Ontario.
Great, Tom, you're, you're making my job very easy tonight. I was going to ask if you'd had an opportunity to read the letter of opposition that we received on the 23rd of October. So you do have that. I'll open the floor up to, to council. Does anybody have any questions at this point of Tom with respect to the presentation? Go ahead, Councilor Pinal.
Thank you, worship, for you, Tom. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation. Just a question for you about Phase One of the best. I was just wondering when you're going to start that project. And then I have another question about your gas expansion.
Sure. So Napanee Phase One, we were awarded a contract in May of this year, and we are in the process of permitting that facility. Our intentions will be to start construction of that facility in 2024. And the project will reach commercial and service of May 2026.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Just back to the, the gas plant expansion. You, you mentioned that it was going to be built, natural gas, whether it be to hydrogen ready. Could you just expand on that a little bit more? And what would be your timeline for it to switch to hydrogen?
So, yeah, so with respect to hydrogen ready, you know, I think where the current technology sits, we can blend a certain amount of hydrogen with the natural gas, with the existing technology that we have. As an example, at our Halton Hills facility, we're actually putting in a blending skid in the next year to blend and pilot this, this opportunity. You know, I think what I would say with the current technology, you know, we would be sort of able to blend in the 20 to maybe 30% range, you know, hydrogen with natural gas. You know, I think the original equipment manufacturers or suppliers of this equipment are working to develop, you know, 100% hydrogen-ready equipment. However, that may be more, I would say, the next generation of equipment. So this facility, should it be implemented, would be, you know, required to operate with a blend of hydrogen and natural gas. Our intentions from day one will be to focus on the natural gas operation side of it.
Thank you for that. Just to follow up on that, just how would hydrogen arrive at the, at the site?
Yep. For example, and again, we have it, you know, you know, we would have to sort of develop plans specific for the Napanee area. However, what I can say for Halton Hills, for instance, we're looking at actually producing hydrogen using, you know, clean hydro-based power at the Niagara facility. And we would be looking at trucking that to our Halton Hills facility. So until sort of broad-based infrastructure like pipelines are developed, I think trucking would be the most likely way to bring hydrogen into a facility such as Napanee.
Okay, thank you. So what we really should be expecting, if you're awarded this, this new contract is this is way down the road. So in what we have right now, we're used to and everything will be fine.
Yeah, I would treat it as a, a future opportunity that requires, you know, you know, more thinking. And obviously, we need to see the hydrogen sort of economy start to evolve, you know, as that takes root. You know, I think there is the potential for applications where it's blended in power generation facilities.
That's great. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Pinal. Is there any other questions of Tom? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, through you, your worship. So you want to put in the Phase Two generator and it's going to be eventually blended with hydrogen and natural gas. How much natural gas do you have coming into that plant? And do you have enough to run everything you have there plus an additional generator?
For the existing facility, we've got long-term contracts to move natural gas to the facility. You know, the pipeline that connects from the legacy TPL system that fuels both Napanee and the Lennox facility has some capacity to, you know, fuel this facility. You know, we are working with, you know, marketers and other fuel delivery arrangements to, you know, put, you know, come up with our final plans. And that, those will be developed between now and the final bid date.
Yeah, because I just wasn't aware that there was enough natural gas coming down to feed all of that. So what is a 30-inch line running through there now?
Unfortunately, I don't have the, the specs of that, but what you said probably sounds like it's in the ballpark.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions or comments? Just a couple of things from myself, Tom. And so it, it looks like the storage capacity you're looking to increase from 250 megawatts to the 500 megawatts. I'm, I'm correct with that?
That's correct. Yeah. The initial phase one is 250, and this would be effectively doubling that capacity.
Great. And, and you briefly mentioned it's the Community Investment Fund. Is that on top of, or on top of the, the funding that you're already providing to our community now?
That would be our intention. You know, I think those are the conversations we'd like to have, at least starting with the economic development team at Napanee as to what that looks like. But this would be incremental to the existing arrangement that we have in place with the town of Napanee.
Yeah, okay, very good. I think that's consistent with, we've already had two other applications as well. So this is the third one is, did anything come out of the, any questions with respect to what I had to say or no? Counselor Shank.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with mayor with the Community Investment Fund. But number one, I just want to make sure that all of council will get a response back from the letter written by the opposition to, that we have what your response is back to. As long as we get all that information also. I think we should just do this, do justice in, of all parties concerned.
Thanks, Counselor Shank. And that's, yeah, I was going to ask that Tom, when he, when he responds to, to the resident with respect to the letter of opposition, if he could make us aware as well. And that way, if we, we have any questions from that letter of opposition, it'll, it should answer those questions hopefully. So.
Yep, no, we'll, we're happy to respond to the resident. Plus, I guess, you know, my plan would be to copy the council with respect to our response.
No, that would be, that would be great. Thanks, Tom. Is there anything further with respect to the, the deposition we've heard this evening? Seeing none, what we're hoping to do, sir, is, is that this is the third one that we've received in, in a matter of weeks. We're hoping by our next meeting of council, which I believe is the 14th of November. It should be accompanied by a staff report with respect to all three of the deputations. And we'd be prepared, I think, at that point to, to provide letters of support or not with respect to you, both your project as well as the other two, I think. So I think that probably should provide you enough time to, to make your application, I'm hoping.
Yep, that, that works very well for ourselves. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. If, if there's nothing else, we'll look for a motion to, to note and receive the deputation from Atura Power and further to direct, or council direct that a staff report regarding the request for a municipal support resolution be brought back to the 14th of November meeting for consideration. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, sir. It was very educational and we look forward to speaking to you in a couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Great, thank you. And thanks folks for attending. Our next deputation would be Donald Stokes, Great Lakes Surf and Turf BBQ Competition. So I saw Donald back, come on up to the front there, Donald, and we'll, we'll hand the floor over to you. Welcome. And whenever you're ready, I'll just remind you, I think you may have been here before. I just reminded to talk a little bit closer to the microphones. It's, we can hear you very clear. It's just the, the folks at home that will want to hear it as well. So go ahead.
How's my voice?
Perfect, thanks.
Great. Well, I'm here tonight to introduce the notion of a barbecue competition, you know, for Napanee. This was first introduced where I used to live in Hope, British Columbia, and ran for a total of three years. And it was dubbed the Great Fraser River Salmon BBQ Competition. It ran successfully and done as a community fundraiser with what was called a sampling event. It went from 500 people to 1,500 people to over 2,000 people with just a shoestring budget. People came from, you know, including teams from afar away as roughly six, you know, maybe six, seven hours. So that includes Oregon, Washington State, Vancouver Island, et cetera. Here, well, Napanee's been hit somewhat hard when it comes to events, Ontario, Canada, so many different parts of, of North America have been hit really hard with, with COVID. And so events are are struggling. I'd like to suggest the notion of introducing this, introducing this in a little bit of a different way. In Southern Ontario, some of the, you know, the past barbecue events, some of them that existed pre-COVID, unfortunately, they no longer exist. As much as that can be viewed as you know, something that's unfortunate, it's a casualty of just many things, you know, that have, you know, that has, has happened. But it also creates an opportunity. So I would propose the notion of introducing this as potentially as a surf and turf competition. And it's something where it's a real, real thing. The slides that are up there are just all time, just to show a little bit of background about what happened in, in Western Canada. The site that was originally set up there still holds roughly, you know, 22, 2,300 people that actively call it, or that, you know, that actively frequent it. The planning that involves this, with any type of event that is put together to be able to, to grow, it requires time. And hence, introducing this or trying to introduce this today with the notion that this would be happening next August 24th. The site, ideally, the site would be here in the market square with the entire back area where the, is commonly used for parking. To use that as the primary barbecue, you know, with the competition area. That area in theory could hold up to 20 teams. But initially, because this is something that's new, it's something that hasn't been done in, in the, the area before. I'd be suggesting the notion of introducing this with eight to 12 teams. With the whole thing, there's a number of unique considerations. Things now cost a lot more money than they did pre-COVID. When this was originally introduced pre-COVID, it was a pretty decent reception that I had with council. And then today, well, I don't know what to expect, you know, because things do cost a lot more money and the, you know, the considerations are a little bit different. But I still would like to be able to try to do something that is local, well, somewhat to the extreme, to where we're using local ingredients, local producers, local farming. Local is with everything as best as can, we can. Money raised from this event would be going back into the community. It would be going back into different things that are commonly, or not commonly, but just some things that say aren't able to be covered. You know, it could be something like, it could be a bicycle rack. It could be pardon the thing, but it could be a washroom. You know, maybe it's to help fund, you know, like a washroom that's vandal-proof and is done up to spec. It could be something to where maybe it's raising some funds for sunscreens for us, the splash pad, maybe money for a pool. Perhaps for the shoreline, you know, for the whole thing that comes to boats. But there's something where there's three primary goals that it all boils down to. It all boils down to promote, produce and inspire. Promoting Napanee, promoting its attributes, putting its best foot forward. And putting its best foot forward in everything, including all the little details that are necessary in order to produce an event that is going to be respected and something that a person can grow with to produce, to produce something at a low cost. But then it's something that's where it's going to be able to produce funds, to be able to go right back into the community. And inspire, to inspire people to want to be able to do better. All of us, I think that need to be able to do this. But I'm here tonight for the, the notion of this. And I hope that I could, you know, I suppose I could come up with a whole bunch of different things. We do have, as part of it, some of it's already been assembled. But with what I did in Hope was some of it was even some things like media relations, community relations. Some of those items, whether it's introducing it to, you know, to business, whether it's introducing it to folks that come in as, as guests, is it some of the little introducing it to, you know, to, to business, whether it's introducing it to folks that come in as, as guests, is it some of the little touches? Some of them are already partially here, like in what I didn't hope was I used a bag similar to this one that was done apparently by the BIA. A very tasteful bag at that. And this was loaded with some, um, little goodies that every team receives one of these. And then on top of that, VIPs, you know, potentially, uh, just some unique people that happen to show some interest in the event because they do. Um, you know, cause we had people as, you know, including the press as far away as, as Oregon. And here, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect teams to be able to come from or potentially, uh, people from the media with Ottawa, Toronto, Montreal, or even heaven forbid, New York State. Because of, you know, the border is really close and we've had those teams or I had teams come from as far as Washington state away and I don't think it's, uh, too much of a stretch to think that we can draw them, uh, in order to be here. My experience, I bring three years to the, uh, the table here. Um, I'm used to, uh, you know, to doing events and my commitment would be doing, uh, doing this or introducing this, you know, I, I would hope to be able to do it for three years and then transfer it over to some type of community group. Um, with, with it being set up to be able to survive on its own. So that it can end up, so that it requires the minimum of any when it comes to, uh, grants and that sort of thing. Um, but I don't know how close I am to that ten minutes. Uh, I can tell you that there's a whole bunch of things when it comes to, because of COVID with, when it comes to permits, liability, safety, that sort of thing. And, well, it looks like there would be one more step that would be added in when it comes to the whole health and safety thing with the, you know, local health board, and that's something that looks quite workable. Um, when it comes to, I, I looked online and I, I didn't see, uh, um, like what the protocol is as far as the fire department goes, but I'm used to working with the, uh, you know, the fire departments, because of course you do have barbecues, you know, that are out there and to ensure that everything is properly safe and to, uh, not just hit spec, but to go beyond it. I propose the notion that this is something, again, that we can, you know, can do this. Judges, you know, judging for it is, is done as, well, there's a little panel of judges and they all judge on taste, texture and appearance. Those judges are also, um, certified judges or in the absence of that, some locals. You know, some locals that have, um, a little bit more, um, foodie aptitudes, you know, so to speak. We close to time?
Keep going, Donald. We'll, uh, we'll extend it a little bit if we have to. It, uh, I think you're probably getting close to the end anyways, but I'd like to hear the complete presentation if you could.
We, we do have, um, also with this, what's called with it being a sampling, you know, uh, event where a person is able to take part in what's called the people's choice. And the people's choice is a person's able to buy these samples and with a rib fest right now, and a rib fest is totally different than a barbecue competition, but a rib fest, uh, typically from what I've seen this past summer, it looks like a person's paying the average eighteen to twenty-five dollars for the average meal. Would that sound about right, Dave? Yep. And what I charged out in Hope, and again, this was money that all went back into the community was we went and had it set up for two dollars for a sample. And here we'd end up having it set up for, because of the change in the economy and because of COVID, three dollars a sample. And everything would be set up, um, so that it would end up being one large fundraising machine. I, um, well, I could go and talk and talk about this in a number of ways. There's been a, a video that I also submitted as part of the, um, the deputation. I don't know whether folks have had an opportunity to, uh, look at it or not, but the video was done as a pilot with the redneck gourmet. With the last time that I came up here and presented this in twenty twenty, which was two weeks before COVID, uh, exploded. It's interesting to note that in that two weeks, there was two inquiries regarding wanting to compete. One of them was a company from Toronto, professional barbecue company, um, you know, a person likes to be able to, uh, you know, compete. The other was, uh, surprisingly, a team from Northern Ontario. So, you know, cause I have spoke to some locals who are thinking, well, this might just only attract people that just from the area. Well, it's capable of attracting much more, you know, because people, when it comes to this, whether it's participating in it or whether they choose to be, be a guest, they'll travel quite some distance. You know, when it comes to, uh, that personnel wise, funding wise, that's something where I'll end up as much as I have a few volunteers right now, where I end up having to get more and pursue more that have, um, aptitude or background. And then, um, also, uh, you know, when it comes to volunteers that I'm I'm pretty lucky when it comes to volunteer retention. Because with this wanting to be, uh, um, like a reoccurring event, volunteer retention is a big deal. And ensuring that volunteers are looked after, including like a volunteer meal and so on, it's all, um, a very important thing. Um, giving back to the community. I think we can end up doing that in spades and doing that in a way that people want to go and they want to spend, they want to be involved. Um, and I invite you to consider this to, you know, to be a part of it. I have came up with, um, a list that, uh, I understand that was a, a report that was, um, I don't think we were able to comment it as with the public, but regarding grants and, um, staffing and so on. Um, but I did come up with a, a detailed list of exactly what I would, uh, would need in order to, to make this work.
Okay. And that's, that's kind of where I think, uh, maybe at this point, we'll, we'll, uh, open it up to the floor and to see if there's any questions, uh, from council and then we'll, uh, see where we can go with it. Go ahead, uh, Counsel Schenk.
I think it's an excellent idea. Uh, we used to have a chili fest here in Napanee or the chili competition. And, uh, years ago, uh, we, uh, volunteers and myself, uh, we cooked, uh, four pigs, barbecued them as a fundraiser. Uh, very well attended. Uh, that's how, uh, a lot of the funds were raised to, uh, do Dorlan Ball Park. Uh, I think it's great. I, I just suggest that you would sit down with the recreation, find out what we need, put a plan in place and, uh, I'm all in favor of it. I think it'd be great to, uh, have something like this in Napanee.
Thanks Counsel Schenk. Is there any other questions, Deputy Mayor Calver?
Through your worship. So, so Don, uh, you'd like to start this up. Get it up and running, run it for three years and then just turning it over to a, a service club. Would you still be offering support to that service club to make sure the transition is good or?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And as, as part of that, um, because of the difficulty that a lot of groups, um, he, you know, have had when it comes to transition. Uh, um, part of that would be coming up with what I call the playbook. Because in, in Hope, when this whole thing, when this all came into being, this well is, we can't duplicate this. We can't do the things that, that you do. And, you know, my response is yes, you can. You know, yes, we all can, you know, can do a lot of these things, but you know, just having a little bit of a template in order to make it work is a big thing. Also, um, Counsel Schenk, you brought up regarding raising, you know, with raising funds. Part of this with the, the funds is that those funds, um, in theory would be controlled by a service group in conjunction with either council or one of the committees. And using staff and using this, you know, the facility, you know, here at the market square, uh, to be able to act as facilitators with the barbecue competition at the back and at the front. Following whether it's the yay or nay for the notion of this, then I would be approaching, you know, one of the other committees, but seeing if we could get an arts and culture event at the front, you know, perhaps like a big, uh, you know, art sale, perhaps it's a market. The numbers, I have the numbers if the person wanted to know realistically about what to expect. You know, in terms of how many people you can, can get first year. I'm more than happy to, uh, you know, to provide those because I like to do things, I like to be accountable.
Uh, a, a, and I think Counsel Schenk brings up a, a very good, uh, point. Um, it really is a neat concept, a neat idea, but, uh, we, we as a municipality have to budget, we have to, if, if there's any kind of, whether that be a financial support to it or supportive in kind, we've kind of got to have that in advance. So, is there a possibility that we refer you to? And, and I think, Don, are you on the, uh, recreation committee or no?
Yes, I am.
You are. If we refer this back to the recreation committee to iron out a bunch of the details and have some very firm requests, numbers, dates and that kind of thing. Would that be something that the recreation committee could sort of iron out for us? And then we could have it brought back to council to see, uh, I, I know we're coming into budget time here over the next, uh, number of weeks and, and then we're going to need to try and establish any events that we're, we want to try and do through our committees. So would it be possible to, to work through the, uh, the, the recreators or the, yeah, the recreation committee to see if we can iron out a bunch of these things as opposed to trying to squeeze you into ten minutes tonight?
Uh, we can. I would like to leave you though with the exact request.
You're more than welcome to leave us, uh, with the exact request and, and, and like I say, I think it would be more prudent if we just forward it back to the recreation committee. And, and, and if there's any questions we have from your request, then we can, we can deal with it through the committee, I think. So. Is there anybody else that has any other comments or questions? Uh, go ahead, Counsel Hicks.
Through you, uh, your worship. Don, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but Lennington, Addington County has, uh, opened up on October second, um, it's called an activation fund. Have you seen this?
Yes, and I believe in the, I think, what is that old expression? Many hands make light work. And hence with the nature of my request, that, um, I know that I would end up having to go do things in a different, you know, a different way because of the conditions that we, uh, are now in, and that things still, they cost money, you know, in order to, you know, to make something that is, um, if you want a top notch event.
It, it, it really is a novel, anything that we can do to draw people into our downtown, bring, draw people into our community is, is going to be a benefit for everybody here, right? So, uh, it really is a, a neat concept. Um, I, I sense that it probably is going to be a pile of work that's going to be required to deal with it. Uh, to do, to do it, but, um, I mean, anything that's worth having is, is worth working for. So.
The, uh, the work that's required to do it, the first year, because this is in a different province and a different set of conditions, that requires full year in, in my eyes. The second year, the person can get away with like nine months, but it's that first year that requires more of, of everything.
Absolutely. And, and, and I was, uh, quite happy to hear that you're not looking at anything before August of twenty twenty-four. So like, that does provide a bunch of time to, uh, to look at this and, and just, just to discover whether it's even something that's, that's doable. So. Um, is there any other comments or questions of Donnie with, with, with respect to his, uh, his deputation? Go ahead Deputy Mayor Calver.
That's through, through your worship. Um, just out of curiosity, what was the, um, population of Hope?
You're looking at around, uh, six thousand people. As Napanee is to Toronto, Hope is to Vancouver. The difference is that there's a heck of a lot more people here compared to a, like the Fraser Valley and the Fraser Canyon, et cetera.
Perfect. Yeah. For some of us have never been out to Hope. It was, uh, nice to know what we're looking at for numbers because you're saying you're getting, you know, two thousand, twenty-five hundred people showing up to an event from a population of six thousand. That's just trying to compare some numbers there.
My expectation here would be greater and that expectation, um, again, I, if when the time comes, I, I have those numbers and I believe they're very realistic.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. Thanks Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions? And I'll let you speak here in a sec, Don. Any other questions of Don? Counsel Mark.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Don, you and I've discussed this a bit in, uh, casual meetings, but, uh, I, I was quite, I'm quite excited about the whole thing actually, because I think it's a good thing to bring more, uh, more people into our town for the downtown core even. And, and I can see this, like I said to you before, um, progressing year after year and, and, and coming, I mean, we have to start somewhere. Uh, are, are you looking for the possibility that there's going to be a lot of amateur bar, barbecuers like, uh, uh, our backyard barbecuers around town here or they're going to be professional barbecuers coming into town with their trailers and, and, you know, I, what, what sort of?
I would suggest the notion that it would be almost identical to Hope, that it would be split. That you'd look at like a fifty fifty split between, um, you know, local, you know, what, what could be called backyard barbecuers? Um, and professional teams and the professional teams of, that isn't like, like, I mean, in a rib competition, like in a rib fest, which you have professional caterers there, a professional team with barbecuers are just fellows that, um, are sort of like, sort of like, uh, an all-star hockey team where they want to be better. They want to be better, whether it's guys or gals, and they want to produce a, a better product. And these people, they travel and part of it, you know, with, with tonight is as much as I understand about the, you know, the budget, the process. Um, in principle, if you could vote in principle, without committing to anything financially, but in principle with, uh, that would be appreciated because it takes time to get the serious teams because folks, for example, like this one person that, you know, from Northern Ontario that inquired in that brief bit, you know, just before COVID hit. They require time, like, you know, like to be able to come from a North Bay, you know, to be able to come from a Timmins, um, it takes a little bit, you know, like, you know, whether it's holidays or that sort of thing to be able to get it. So like the more lead time, the better. If a person is working with, uh, less lead time, the quality of the event will not be the same. You know, if a person looks at just three, you know, three months, that sort of thing.
No, and, and I can appreciate Don. Uh, like I say, we're, we're going to be knees deep into budget discussions here, uh, in the not too distant future. So, um, I appreciate your presentation. I, I think it's a well worth, uh, idea to, to move forward on. And I think it would probably be, uh, um, more beneficial that if we can work it through our recreation committee and be, and, and having a, a detailed, um, report come back from them with, with exact numbers and things like that and an exact request. I think that would be, uh, um, probably the appropriate thing to do. And, and we're not in a position that normally we don't get involved in making decisions the nights of presentations or deputations anyway. So, um, that's kind of what we've become the norm here. So, uh, thank you. If there's no further questions, uh, seeing none, I would look for a, uh, a motion to note and receive the presentation of Donald Stokes with respect to the Great Lakes Surf and Turf BBQ BBQ competition and, and as well to refer the proposal for barbecue competition to the recreation committee for consideration as part of the overall budget uh, request for twenty twenty-four. Moved by, uh, Counsel Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Donald. It, uh, is a very enlightening presentation. Next up, we have a presentation or a deputation from Saint Mary Magdalene Church request for utility bill adjustment. Uh, come up, jump on up gentlemen, and I think we have a couple of people have declared a conflict of interest with this respect to this and I'll just allow them to, uh, uh, to leave the room and, uh, I'll just get you to identify yourselves and we will, uh, give you the floor.
Bill Russell.
Thank you, Bill.
And Chris Gilman.
Chris, thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a little bit of history on this deputation that's being, uh, presented. Um, back in very late June, we had a problem with the boiler in the church itself. And from that time until al- almost August the thirtieth, um, we had water flowing through the boiler system into the, what they call a condensate tank. And starting in June, the valve stuck, which means that up until August the thirtieth, water was flowing freely through there. Now, I have to tell you about the boiler system in, in the church very briefly. It's in a separate room. Um, only one door into it and that's from the outside. As I look around this room, that boiler has probably been in existence for longer than most of this room has, have been living. It's that old. It, it ranges between fifty-five and sixty years old. It was put in by Napanee boilers. And if you know anything about the past history of Napanee boilers, um, they were probably world known and shipped them all over for it. So it is a good boiler. We do have a maintenance program with a local company here. And they come in twice a month when the boiler is in operation. And they do maintenance to make sure the chemicals are added, et cetera, and it's working properly. Once they shut it down, they don't come back in until we decide that we're going to start it up again because of the temperature within the church. During that time, the boiler room is really not used for anything. There's some storage material in there, but nobody is in there basically over the course of the end of May, first part of June, right until September, late September, when it fired up again. But during that time period, we'd had this problem with the boiler. What happened was that water in the system continued flowing. And as a result of that, we, we came into three time periods of billing. And it was, it's very expensive. This deputation, I think you all have a copy of it. It shows facts and figures that relate to that. When the company was called in as a result of us discovering, and it was through the second bill that we realized that we had a big problem there. When they came in, they found out it was the float valve that was stuck open. And what they did, and it's in a very, very tight spot to get a part in and a part out. So what they did was they rebuilt the float. And there were two, two operators that had to come in and work on it to get it done just because of the confines of the area. The problem we have, and I suspect most churches in the area, is money problem. We're down in attendance, we're down in financial intake. And unfortunately, our expenses keep going up and up all the time. So what we're looking for is some, some relief from the billing. And Nathan Murphy, who's, who did a great job helping with this deputation, has the figure there for you that what our average use of water would be in comparison to what the actual water that was flowing through the system is. I know you, you have guidelines that you go by. And what we're asking for is your consideration in this to assist us in the best way you can as far as financial reimbursement to the town for the bills.
Great, thanks, Bill. Mr. Nobles, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I just wanted to speak to my letter of support, just as Bill indicated. We aren't flush with cash, but we do try to be out looking out of our, into our community. We try to be good citizens of Napanee. And, and the money that we do have tries to go to help. And I've outlined several programs that, that St. Mary Magdalene has initiated, initiated. And, and we want to continue those programs and we, we want to be good citizens of Napanee. And so, an unanticipated expense like this just does put a hardship on us. And, and we hope to have some consideration.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions with respect to the deputation before us now? Counselor Schenk.
In the past, Nathan, I know years in the past, you were allowed, I believe, one in five years or one in seven years, there was a bylaw in place. And I think they forgave the sewage relief. I'm not sure if there was water also on that, but I'm not 100% sure on the bylaw that was passed. I knew in the past that this is something that happened. This was an accident that happened. And they were allowed, every certain applicants leading their case would have once. Like if you use this kind of go get out of jail free card, you couldn't use it, you know, next month if there was another problem. But at least gave the opportunity of some fairness through it. Where unbeknownst to anybody else, this was something that just happened. Now, Nathan, could you give us a little mindset on this?
Through your worship, sorry, I haven't historically dealt with these. Generally, Peter does, but obviously he's away at the moment. I did try and look into it a bit today to see what the bylaw proceedings have been in the past. I saw that the, the one in five years, it looks like, and I'll refer to Jessica, she may have some background on this too. In 2013, they repealed the one in five year portion and actually allowed for annual. I don't know if there's been a change since then. But that's just what I was able to briefly find today. I know in 2013, there was an adjustment from that one in five year review, but I don't know what the bylaw to, to oversee that is. But I know Jessica may.
Through your worship, and again, this is before my time, but my understanding when we looked into this last year is that a few years ago, council had actually made the decision to repeal the relief policy entirely. And that is the situation that we are currently in. If council wanted to change that and go back to a relief system, we would be looking for a new policy with the parameters in which that would be deemed appropriate. But my recollection when we spoke about this last year was that that, a decision had been made to repeal that practice.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
Well, I was on when we had the policy. So the point is, is I believe, I think it's only fair, whether this is a church organization. You know what I mean? They only do good in the community. Their only purpose is, is, you know what I mean? It's all good. So if you can't help these individuals, we've had senior citizens in the past that, you know, they had a leaky toilet or a running toilet came on. And financially, things are getting tougher. I think there's got to be a happy medium in between. So I'm in favor of doing what we did in the past. If we could offer the sewage, you know, the sewage portion of the bill, all right? To offer some type of, you know, we're not giving the whole write off, you know what I mean? But we're still trying to help into the community, all right? A certain portion. And I don't believe it should be done annually, all right? This is just a wake up call, maybe, maybe check other things. But this was an accident unbeknownst to you guys or anybody else. So I think we should help.
If I could just add one thing, we hope this doesn't go annually because it costs us well over $1,000 to get that tank fixed for the float.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. Oh, sorry, I see.
Sorry, through your worship, just to make a correction. After that was repealed, that was a notice of motion. That wasn't actually a bylaw. I apologize. So that was in a notice of motion, so that never got brought forward as annual, just, just to clarify. I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
So Nathan, if I'm correct, this was just brought up as a notice of motion, but it was never repealed as a bylaw?
Through your worship, my understanding by law was repealed, then a notice of motion came forward from a member of council. That's the way I interpret it, but I don't think it ever switched to an annual program. I just want to be clear on that.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, I think we should just note and receive this and take a deeper look into things and see what we can do and have staff come back to us.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Did you wish to make that by way of motion?
Yes, I would.
So your motion is to note, receive the presentation and have staff report back to us with respect to our options to be able to provide relief for these folks? Is that, is that something that can be put together? Is this something that's time sensitive, Bill? Or is it something that we can have a look at over the next couple of weeks?
Oh, definitely. Look at it. It's not, you know, really time sensitive. It has, we have to, you know, pay what we, we have to pay, so.
Okay, so it's, it's not by any stretch of the imagination, something that's going to have to come to fruition tomorrow or the next day. So Mr. Murphy, is it possible to get a report with respect to what options we have with respect to this request at our next meeting?
Through your worship, I think we can work with utility staff and try and put something in there, yes.
Great, thanks. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Schenk. Is there, is there any further comments, questions, concerns with respect to the deputation? Counselor Penal, go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. Thanks, guys, for coming in here and talking to us about this. I just, where did the water go after the float got stuck? But did it go down the sewer or where did it go?
Yes, it goes right down to the sewer. And there, there's a small tube that takes the overflow and it falls down into a kind of a catch bucket, and then it's out to the sewer. And the only problem with that and this, the workers that were there said that you would never hear the water flowing into that catch bucket if there was water there and the flow of water was sufficient. It only, if, if it changes in pressure, you would be able to pick up a noise. And we do have a window that comes out, it's vented for the boiler in the wintertime. And if you were walking by there and the pressure was such that it, it varied, you could hear it flowing, but if it didn't vary, it's just a straight stream that comes down and you'll never hear it. So people walking by, you know, in the, in the summertime could have heard it, but nobody did.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Counselor Penal. Is there any further questions? We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further question of these gentlemen tonight? And I guess, I guess my only question is, is that Mr. Murphy has all the information, all the data. And under your request, he has all that information, I'm thinking.
Yes, he's done a very good job getting all the data together for us. Yeah, very good.
Perfect, thank you. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll look for a vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, gentlemen, and we should have something put together in a couple of weeks. So, but thanks for, thanks for coming.
If I can be of any help to council, if you want to see the area or anything else, if I can be of help, just call me.
We, we do appreciate that. Thanks, Bill.
Right, thank you very much.
Well, just, thanks, Counselor Penal. Welcome back, Counselor Norrie and Counselor Hicks. Moving on, we'll move on to deputations, items on the agenda. And we spoke about this a little bit earlier. It's the correspondence from Mark Connor with respect to the Atura Power Deputation. I know Ms. Connor couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted her letter of opposition put on the record. Is there anything that anybody wants to talk about with respect to the letter? Or are we good to note and receive the letter and, and maybe have further conversation? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
I know the family and they live in very close proximity of Atura Power. And some of the concerns that she has written, when I was on council beforehand and was on the committee for that, we had brought up all those concerns. They said, ah, it was all right, no problem. And it ended up being a problem. And so I just want to make sure that, that Atura Power takes this letter seriously and that, to their best ability to go ahead and answer those questions.
Yep, thanks, Counselor Schenk. And by the sounds of things, it sounds like they will, and they'll make sure that we get copied on it. So we can have further discussion, I guess, in a couple of weeks. So if there's nothing else, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the correspondence from Mark Connor. Moved by Counselor Schenk, seconded by Counselor Penal. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business, Madam Clerk. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. The administrative consent agenda. And I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll go through these things one by one. And then, and if we have any conversations, we can have conversations once we get to them, then we can do a motion to note and receive all of them. So first on the agenda is the regular session of council minutes for October 10th, 2023. Is there anything that anybody wants to bring up or speak to with respect to that? Seeing none, committee minutes for the Downtown Advisory Committee, Recreation Advisory Committee, Arts Advisory Committee, and the Waste Diversion Committee. With respect to the minutes of those committees, is there anything that anybody wants to highlight or bring note of with respect to those? Seeing none, correspondence for information items dated October 24th, 2023. Are there any of the correspondence for information that anybody wants to remove, have conversation? I know that we do have a couple of conversation pieces later on in the agenda. But with respect to the ones that are left, is there anybody that wants to speak to any of those, Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yeah, I'd like to send a letter of support off to the town of Coburg in their catch and release justice program as well as the township of Howick.
Yeah, and I think we've, yeah, we've, we've got those pulled up for later on in the agenda, so we can speak to it then. So, is there, is there anything else? Seeing none, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 137 request, November 11th, 2023, remember its day parade. Is there any conversations that anybody wants to, to have with respect to, to that? Seeing none, flag raising and proclamation, Louis Real Day, November 16th, 2023. Is there any conversations with respect to that? Go ahead, Counselor Penal.
I think your worship, Madam Clerk, I was just wondering, did, did we do this last year? And did we vet this? Okay, are you, you're okay with doing this?
Through your worship, we did not get the request last year, but we did get it two years ago and we approved it then. The federal government also recognizes Louis Real Day, so I feel confident that we are okay with this one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Penal. Community and Corporate Services Activity Report. Is there anything that anybody wants to have in conversation with respect to that activity report that we've all had the ability to, to read? Seeing none, Activity Report, Financial Services, October 2023. With respect to this report, is there anything that anybody wants to have any conversations about? Seeing none, Activity Report, Growth and Expansion, October 2020, October 24th, 2023. With respect to the Activity Report of Growth and Expansion, is there anything in that report that anybody would like to discuss? Seeing none. And I think that's the, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Penal.
Sorry, worship for that. I was just wondering if, through you, if Michael could just speak a little bit on that 44 KV line for the hospital. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Nobles.
Through your worship, yeah, thank you for flagging that, Counselor Penal. The Richmond Park Home Subdivision, so that'd be the extension of Richmond Park Drive located immediately north of Canver's Way. There exists the secondary feed from the Belleville Road Hydro Infrastructure through private lands to the hospital. And the intention was for that to be buried underground through the subdivision lands. However, Hydro won't permit that. They're advising that their policies for secondary feeds for hospitals must be located above ground. Their preference is always to go on municipal lands. And their preferred route is to take the trail connecting Belleville Road and Richmond Park Drive and run, run the poles and the lines within the limits of the trail. We've met with Hydro on site and we expressed immense concern over tree loss. It's very well treed. It's a very pretty trail. What they're doing is they're, they're, they're going to be flagging, placing stakes where poles would be located and flagging essentially a corridor of where trees may need to be impacted, removed, or thinned out. When that's completed, staff would, will alert council and we would recommend to, doing a more of an educational walk with council to explain where each pole will be located, how we're mitigating to the greatest extent possible any tree removal. Before we can sign any consent to allow for that relocation, just, just so council's fully aware of what, what Hydro's proposing and what we would ultimately see. The developer may wish to not pursue the relocation. It's going to be quite a hefty bill, from what I understand from Hydro. So the end result may be that it remains in place where it stands today. But there, there is a possibility of it being relocated. So hi, this came through Hydro to us. And we were very, very upfront that we do not want to see major tree loss in this area. Especially now, we walked it in the fall a couple of weeks ago and it, you know, colors were, were very vibrant. It's very pretty. So staff are very well aware of any concern that, that the public would have over major tree loss. So we're, we're looking at jogging on either side of the trail itself to mitigate any major tree loss. And Hydro's plan sounds good at this point in time, but we want to get their arborist crew out there to really flag, you know, specifically this tree, that tree will be, will be impacted. Just give a visual before anything goes forward. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Nobes. Go ahead, Counselor Pernell.
Yeah, thank you, worship, just to follow. So the line's in place now and the developers wish to, to remove it would benefit them in, in what way?
Gives a little bit of flexibility from a streetscape perspective that, you know, you don't have overhead hydro lines of, you know, fair size. It, it's a, it makes for a more contemporary subdivision appearance, I guess you could say. Typically, all the infrastructure is buried underground. It's not often that you see a new subdivision with overhead hydro. So I think it's from a saleability perspective, it's advantageous for them to have it relocated. I think that's the major push, but again, they're going to get a, an estimate from Hydro and I think there might be some sticker shock. So they, they're going to have a bit of a decision to make, but it will come back through Hydro to staff on, you know, if the developers wishing to proceed in this manner. And then Hydro ultimately needs to seek approval from the town to relocate within our, within our lands. Their, their, their preference is never, is always to go with municipal lands as we are, are very easy to deal with effectively. We have the capabilities to keep our roadways clear for them to access their infrastructure on a continual basis. And it, to them, the trail is, it's in place. It's very, it would be very easily accessed if they needed to get in and make, make changes on that line. So their preference would not be to seek an easement from a private landowner. Their, their, their procedures are, that's not essentially permitted. So we're a little, we're, we're in the driver's seat ultimately. But we understand, we're trying to balance the, balance the needs of both the community, developer and Hydro all in one.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Nobes, and thanks, Counselor Pernell, Counselor Hicks.
That's through you, your worship. This question is more to Deputy Mayor Calver as the Chair of the Recreation Committee. Not maybe what you were going to talk about, Brian. The Trails Committee, I don't know if that falls within their purview or if that's already an established trail. Would they still have a, an interest in walking it, do you think?
I definitely think we'd have an interest in walking it to check it out. Because the last thing we want to do is start destroying, destroying what trails we already have.
Thanks. And I think I missed Deputy Mayor Calver's got a question, I think.
I just want to be clear, like if, if there was a change that it's solely a responsibility financially for the developers, is that correct?
Mr. Nobes?
That is correct. The, the town would have no financial obligation in this regard at all. And to be clear, the, the trail, the functionality of the trail would remain, you know, still could be used for that purpose. It's, we're really trying to safeguard the aesthetics of it.
Yep, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
What is Hydro got a guess with burying the line? Have they actually said, like, I mean, there's buried lines throughout. I, I get it. It's a secondary line to the hospital. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. They're, they're against burial because it is, one, it's feeding the hospital. Given the use, it's a very, you know, having that secondary feed up and running all the time is a necessity. If there were an issue underground, getting access to it and making those remedies would take longer than if it were above ground. So their, their preferences have it above ground. They would be able to fix it in a much more expedient manner in that case. If this were not feeding a hospital, it'd be an entirely different story.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Great. Is there any other questions with respect to this report? Seeing none, the Activity Report Infrastructure Services, October 2023. Do we have any questions or concerns with respect to that report? Seeing none, the Activity Report Legislative Services, October 2023. Do we have any questions or concerns with respect to the Legislative Services Report? Seeing none, the Activity Report of the Fire Department, October 24th, 2023. Do we have any questions or concerns with respect to that report? Seeing none, the Access E11 September 2023 Report. Or do we have any questions with respect to that or concerns? Seeing none, finally, the 2023 Quarterly Financial Capital Report Q3. Do we have any questions with respect to the, to that, that report or any concerns? Seeing none. So we'll look for a motion and bear with me, it looks like it's probably going to be a long one. That council consent to the approval of the following routine items. Council Minutes, October 10th, 2023, Committee Minutes, Downtown Advisory, Recreation Advisory, Arts Advisory and Waste Diversion. The Correspondence for Information Items, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 137 Request, November 11th, 2023, Rememberance Day Parade. Flag Raising and Proclamation Request Louis Real Day, November 16th, 2023. Activity Reports for Community and Corporate Services, Financial Services, Growth and Expansion, Infrastructure Services, Legislative Services, and the Fire Department for the month of 20, October 2023. And the E11 Reporting Statistics, September 2023. And finally, the Quarterly Financial Capital Report Q3. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. And I'd like to thank council for not making me read through that again. Up next, Items for Consideration, Growth and Expansion Industrial Community Improvement Plan. And I think, Mr. Nobes, we, we started this conversation maybe an hour, an hour and a half ago, and I think time to, to complete it. So go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I really don't have much more to add. Really just seeking clarity, seeking counsel direction on that tiered approach that, that was presented. Yeah, I'm curious, does council think the $3 million valuation, for example, is a little low? You know, only five jobs is that, should we wipe that out and start at, you know, 5 million and 10 jobs, for example? What's council's appetite for this? You know, do you like how it's drafted? Do you want to see any changes? Just looking for, looking for any direction that council might have. I'd like to, I'd like to get it by resolution so that I can really lock in a revised draft that we can recirculate to commenting agencies.
Great, thanks, Michael. Counselor Hicks, I think you had your hand up.
Through you, your worship. I'm, I'm going to move this closer one sec. My arms aren't that long. I like the tiered approach. I don't think, I think 3 million is a good place to start because I think even if you get small industry coming in to start, it's like chumming for the big fish, if you will. They're, they see the growth in the town and I think that's really important. The other thing I wanted to ask, between, say, 3 and 5 million, if it falls in there at 4, do you round up to the 5? Or do you round down to the 3?
I, I'd recommend we round down to the 3, so they would qualify. So it would be any, a minimum of 3 in a minimum of 5 jobs. So you're, if you're under the 5 million and under the, either under the 5 million or under the 10 jobs and you, you fall down effectively into the next bracket.
Thank you.
Counselor Shank?
I think it's an excellent idea, but my concern is, and I, I want to be, be in the kind of devil's advocate here, Mike. To hire five people is nothing anymore. I hire, I have way more than five staff. But let's say another person's in a competitive business, comes in, sets up a business and $3 million in a, in a new construction build that's next to nothing now. And you go ahead and all of a sudden, that individual now is getting 50% deduction off his taxes for the first year on a $3 million bill if he hires five, where the other guy who's already been here, never got any cut, is hiring, let's say, five people. He's got the same thing, qualifies. Is it, are we providing an unfair work advantage when the, when it's only at 3 million? That's, that'd be my concern, all right, to look at that, that being the low number. When you get to the 10 million and hiring 20 full-time, and these are all new builds, all right? Is my only concern is, is that, because you're wanting feedback, Mike, is something to look at? Is the 3 million and only five employees, are we creating an unfair work advantage to somebody else that might be currently have a business in town? I just look into it. I don't have the answers tonight. I will dig into it further. But if you could dig into that further, that's the reason why I'm a little bit concerned about 3 million.
Thanks, Counselor Shake. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, again, I'm not a professional builder or anything, but I think I agree with Counselor Shank. I think the 3 million is a little on the low side that we should start at maybe at, at the 10. I just know, you know, doesn't take much to, to spend a million dollars on a building, another million dollars on equipment and stuff. It's, it's, I think it's a little light, my opinion's a little low.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver, Counselor Pernell.
Thank you, worship. I'm, I'm going to be on the other side of that now and say that, yes, 3, $3 million is a little low, it's probably not going to happen. It'll probably be more than that. But let's be happy that they are here and we're welcome with, with the CIP. So I don't have any problems with the values that were there. I think it's a great, great plan. And, and I spoke before, we have this land and we need to, to kickstart this to, to get things going. We're so close to the 401, we're in between Toronto, Montreal, with, this is beautiful land. Let's, let's, let's get the action going. We, we have some boots on the ground now, but this will only help out. So I, I don't think we should really be too concerned. My thoughts are that we shouldn't be really concerned about how low this starts at. I think that we should just kick it in, in, into play right now and, well, when it comes back. But now I'm battling, so I'll just let it go at that. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Pernell, go, Counselor Norrie, and then I'll go back to Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm not a business person, everybody knows that. But I trust what staff's doing in this. They've obviously been studying other towns in this area, towns of our size. So as hard as it is to believe, I agree with Counselor Pernell 100% that we should leave it as is and see what we draw in town.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Gee, Bob, you got to get out of my head and take, stop reading what's on my mind. That was going to be my next question. This is obviously what other communities are doing around us. This is what we're competing with. And if that's the case, I think we should move forward with this.
Through your, through your worship, I, I will note, so for example, Loyalist, our closest neighbor that has a CIP in place. They don't have a tiered approach like this. They just have a blanket, it's fairly low valuation. It's, I think it's only 500,000 project value and five jobs, five or 10 jobs. It's, it's pretty low. But again, it was drafted at the start of COVID, so it, you know, prices have gone up. I, I'm not sure if they're about to reevaluate the, the figures in there, if they're being inundated with applications. I mean, a new industrial building, you're gonna, you're gonna meet the 3 million threshold pretty easily, I, I feel. But I will add, for council's consideration, that this can be amended at any time too, right? So this could be a starting point. We could see how it goes. And if, you know, council feels that there should be amendments made, we can certainly make those changes. But really, I guess what, what I'm looking for is where do we want to start with this? Do we want to drop off the 3 million? Do we want to kick start it at 5 and 10 jobs? What's the, you know, it sounds like there's a little, you know, couple differing opinions on that, but looking for some solid direction so that I can lock it into a revised draft.
Yeah, and, and I think that's an important thing because I think we want to get this thing off and running. So go ahead, Counselor Shank.
Well, after listening to everybody else's input, I was, I was just trying to be the devil. I always, anything new, I always try to be on the other side. Also try to look at it from both sides of the coin. But no, as a principle, and now that you say that we can always amend this, if there is a problem or if there is a concern, we can always amend it and we can always change it. Then, yeah, I'm in favor of your tiered scale as starting at that level. So there we go.
Yep, thanks, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you through your worship. Michael, this is for new build, but does anything in the CIP address an existing business that wants to do a $3 million expansion?
Yep.
So that, with, with an increase in full time? Okay.
That's correct.
So that would address Counselor Shank's concern about somebody that's already in business, not getting the same advantages as somebody new coming in. Okay.
It, it would, yeah. So it would be, it would relate to any improvements to the property. So if you have a, an existing building, you're doing a $3 million expansion that's going to necessitate five additional full-time jobs? You would qualify in this case. New build or addition?
Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This has to be industrial tax, right?
This is industrial, correct. Yes.
So I was thinking agriculturals.
No, this would be strictly industrial.
That, that may be a discussion for another day. I thought I said hand on the side of the table. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Michael, I, I like your levels, actually, what you've got there. I mean, I'd like to see 10, $3 million companies come in or whatever as opposed to, you know, I don't think we should nickel and dime this. I think we should go ahead with it. I like what levels you've got there. That's just my gut feeling on the whole thing.
Counselor Norrie.
I move staff recommendation on this report.
Is that going to? Yep. Oh, I have Madam Clerk would like to weigh in as well.
Sorry, through your worship, just based, based on the conversation I'm hearing at the table, would you like to move staff recommendation with the addition that council specifically direct the draft? CIP does include a sliding scale grant system to include projects valued below $10 million as described as an alternative option in the staff report.
That's exactly what I said. Thank you. I just did the Colesville version.
I, I do believe I heard you say that, Counselor Norrie. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further, oh, I have a, go ahead, Counselor Pernell.
Uh, thank you, worship, Madam Clerk, just to speak about what we're just saying with the alternative options. That was pretty much number one of what you said, the options. But with the sliding scales, it would be starting there, but then would we be mentioning the 10 million and the 5 million as well? So that would be options, alternative options, 1, 2, and 3? Okay, thank you.
Through your worship, yes, that is my understanding. If that is also Mr. Nobes' understanding.
Through your worship, to the clerk, yes, that's my understanding. Apologies if, if the 1, 2, and 3 was misleading. It was intended to be one alternative option with three levels of a tiered approach.
Oh, that's great. Thanks. Yeah, that's what we want.
Great, thank you. I believe we may have a motion on the floor. If there's no further comments or questions, all in the favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Request for supportive resolution provincial legislation for third-party short-term rental companies. And I believe Counselor Hicks wanted this pulled out. Did you want to start, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I would like a, a resolution and support. And I do have the wording here, if you need me to read it off, where I could just let Madam Clerk do it, since she is so proficient.
Let's give Counselor Hicks an opportunity first.
I move a request for supportive resolution that council received the correspondence from the city of Burlington, respecting Burlington's resolution regarding provincial legislation for third-party short-term rental brokerage companies. And further, that council directs staff to send a letter of support for the resolution passed by the city of Burlington to the Premier of Ontario, MPP Brisei, and all Ontario municipalities.
Counselor Hicks moves the motion, seconded by Counselor Martin. Does anybody want to have any conversation before we call the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Request for supportive resolution, catch and release justice. And I believe Deputy Mayor Calver, that's the one you were referencing to, so you're more than welcome to start.
Yeah, I would just like to send a letter off and support for this. It seems to be quite a thing going on around the rest of the communities. So I'd like to send a letter off and support.
Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. And Madam Clerk, you have what you need?
Yes, through your worship, I assume this is also to the Premier and
Uh, yes, through your worship, I assume this is also to the Premier, MPP, and all Ontario municipalities.
That is correct. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowher, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Is there any further comments or questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Bylaws, uh, the first bylaw is number 2023 0066. Being a bylaw to license refreshment vehicles in the town of Greater Nappany. And I know we've, uh, we've had some pretty good discussions with respect to this. Uh, as recent as, uh, the 26th of September. So, uh, we'll look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by. Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Before we do the three readings, is there anyone that has to have any conversations with respect to this bylaw? Go ahead, Counsel Shank.
The only, uh, is, is the fee. Uh, under, under a class one. It's still extremely, maybe I'm wrong. All right, the way I read it was. Three hundred dollars or a hundred fifty dollars if it's a, a new one.
Yes, so through your worship, that fee was the license fee that was established for reviewing of the application. Ensuring that it complies with the bylaw. Um, there is for ones operating on municipal property, a separate lease fee, which is. I, I believe coming forward in November.
I just wanted to. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you, Counsel Shank. Is there any other questions or comments before we do our three readings? Seeing none, ready first, second, and finally pass this 24th day of October 2023. All in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried. Bylaw 2023 0067 being a bylaw to adopt a reserves and reserve fund policy. For the corporation of the town of Greater Nappany, and I know that we have, uh, seen a number of reports with respect to our reserve polities. Policies, uh, that we had discussions within Sep- in, in our September meetings. So. We'll look for a motion to, to put it on the floor and then, uh, see if there's any conversation for three readings. Moved by Counsel Penal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any questions or comments, concerns before two or three readings with respect to this bylaw? Council, uh, sorry, Mr. Murphy, I promoted you already.
Through your worship, I just want to make note of, uh, uh, balancing the DC funds. Um, Chief Hammond happened to be looking at it and he noticed that the fire funds were a little bit lower than he expected. Um, turns out. There was a discrepancy in the funding entries last year, so Cherrywood Park was actually funded through the fire one accidentally. And has been adjusted. So you'll see that the fire DC fund has gone up 246,000 dollars from the previous meeting. And the recreation one has gone down 246,000 dollars. So. Same amount of money still sitting there, but just allocated properly. So I wanted to be sure if anybody was looking that closely that they knew what that was.
Great, I appreciate that, Nathan. Does anybody have any questions for Nathan with respect to that? Go ahead, Counsel Shank.
More of a comment is just to know that our chief has, uh, no health issues with his heart, cause. If I would see that in a budget line, that I was out 247,000, especially after this week that he's had, uh, he's doing quite well.
Thanks. Thank you, uh, Counsel Shank. If there's nothing further, we'll do our first, second, and finally pass this 24th day of October 2023. All in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2023 0068. A bylaw to adopt a community grants policy for the corporation of the town of Greater Nappany. And once again, we've, uh. We, we've seen a report, at least one, maybe more with respect to this, uh, bylaw on the 10th of October meeting. So I know we've had some, some good discussions about it. So we'll look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counsel Penal, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Once again, before we do our three readings, does anybody have any conversations or concerns or questions with respect to this bylaw? Seeing none, read a first, second, and finally passes 24th day of October 2023. All in favor of the bylaw. Opposed, motions carried. Information reports from members, uh. Is there any information reports, uh, from members that they want to identify tonight? Seeing none, inquiries, do, uh, any members of council have any inquiries of staff that, uh, we can, uh, yeah, go ahead, Counsel Norrie.
Thank you, um. I've received almost as many emails, calls, and direct negative, uh. Times with some citizens, maybe because I'm the only urban, uh, camp award about the leaf and brush pickup. We look up in the trees, there's a lot. I have a lot of seniors of little cars and they've been, and I know one that's been told by a, a staff member. While they were working was, uh, well, you have to take them yourself. To get rid of them. Um, Ken, is there anything that staff can come up with? And I'm thinking drop off zones, but of course, some people put regular garbage. A Saturday or a few trucks are sitting there. People can throw the bags in them. I don't know, but. We have to give them a little more time, whether it be a couple of weeks from now, something. I don't mean a full-scale pickup, but. Is there something staff can think about outside the box to see if they can help the citizens? We don't have the availability. Of rural with fields, and I don't want to say burn them, cause I know. Like we did in the sixties when I was a kid, but, uh. I just, I just to help them this year, then maybe next year we can relook at the scheduling, but is there anything staff without coming back with reports? Just think outside the box and see if we can do something to help, especially the senior citizens of my ward that have. A lot of trees and want to look after their property. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Norrie. Uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Zadabrig, you want to weigh in on us or not? But I, I think it's probably going to depend, be dependent on, on the, the time and the workload of our public works people, but I'll let Mr. Zadabrig comment on that.
Yes, uh, through your worship, uh, we'll, we'll work with, uh, infrastructure services to, to, uh, see if there's a, something we can do with the schedule. And, uh. They probably have a pretty good idea of the volumes that they're picking up now and whether it compares to other years.
Alright, thanks, Mr. Zadabrig, and thank you, Mr. Counsel Norrie. Is there, uh, Counsel Penal?
Thank you, worship. I, I too want to jump in on this because, uh, much like Counselor Norrie. Um, emails, phone calls, uh, regarding this, and, and if you just drive around. Nappany, you'll see that there's still a lot of trees with leaves on it. Um, although we do give the opportunity for people to drop them off at the, uh, to landfills. Um, the problem is that, uh, some residents don't have that ability to take them down there. Uh, it's about a month early from last year. Uh, I understand from some comments that were floating around emails earlier. Uh, about putting bags out too early and the rainy season comes and it's a mess and, and that sort of stuff. Um, but a happy medium would be great here if we could, uh. You know, if people are still gonna put them at the side of the road if we can pick them up, because there's way too many trees. Uh, maybe I like to procrastinate, but I never even got one bag out this, this, uh, season. Because, uh, we still have lots of leaves on our own, and so why do it twice? But anyway, I just wanted to, uh, make mention that I too. Have been receiving that, uh, so the public is watching that and, uh, they have, they have great concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Counsel Penal, Counselor Shank.
Uh, I don't need an answer now. It's just, uh, at the next council meeting, we could have a little update of what we're doing with our email, uh, website. Uh, just because the website is so difficult to go through, I was looking through for some public skating. And then there's blackout areas and this, and it's very hard to go. It's not user-friendly, not that I'm some computer expert, but. I've had numerous people and I know we were looking at, into it. I just like to, you know, that we're in the right direction, you know, that we're. Not forgetting about it, cause I know everybody's extremely busy.
Yep, thanks, uh, Counsel Shank. And, uh, oh, Mr. Zadabrig can answer it actually tonight, so go ahead, Brad.
Through your worship, yes, staff is continuing to work on building a new website. It's not forgotten, and there's quite a few hours into it already. Uh, it's a fairly intensive process when you are. It's, it's a lot harder to redo a website than start one from scratch. So it's, 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 it's about coordinating all the departments, getting all the right information. And working with a, with a supplier that has some new tweaks to their system and understanding how all those link together. Uh, you, you, you probably know that if there's a broken link, that's as much of a problem. So it's all of that work and it's going on regularly. And their staff are working on every week.
Go ahead, Counsel Shank.
That's just great news. The only reason why I kind of, but we was bringing it up again, because, um. I went on our loyalist and some of the other municipalities, you punch in public skating, boom, it's right there. With us, we have to. You know, be a computer scientist to figure out where we're gonna go to. That's the reason why I was bringing it up. But you're working on it and you're gonna get it done, so there we go.
Yep, but go ahead, Mr. Zadabrig.
And, and I can assure you, uh, Counsel Shank, that staff are as frustrated with their website as, as the public is. Uh, because, uh, often in our, in larger organizations, the website is crucial to staff, gaining, getting information as well.
Great, uh, thanks. Uh, is there anything else? Seeing none, uh, notice of motions. Does anybody have any notice of motions this evening? Seeing none, new business? Is there any new business that anybody wants to bring up this evening? Seeing none, announcements. Does, is there anything, any members of council want to make? And I see a whole pile of hands going up, so. Let's start with Counsel Martin and we'll work down the row here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of, uh. Uh, announcements, um. I think everybody knows the, uh, Heritage Committee is doing a new virtual mapping of historic sites in town. And, uh, we're always trying to get young people to get involved in different projects and things. And we've got a couple of, uh, students from NDS that's helping the, helping us out with going around and taking new pictures of, uh. Of heritage buildings, and I just wanted to, uh, make mention of, uh, Gavin and Aislinn. We, uh, we thank you for, uh, helping us out with that and, uh, thank you very much, and, uh, we really do appreciate it. And like I say, it's always good to get youth. Involved in, even though it's historical, we need. Historical, present, and future involved, cause we need future people to appreciate the past, so. I'm, I'm glad to get kids from the photography, uh, class and, and this, NDS, so. It's good for them to have some practice, good for us. I want to thank them very much.
Great, thanks, uh, Counsel Martin. Well sent, said, uh, Counsel Norrie.
Thank you, your worship. It, it's all been said before and it can't be said enough, but I just want to say. In my, my word, I, I go for a lot of walks and it's hard to believe. Um, and, and a lot of the people that pop up when they see me and thank, want to say thank you to the chief and our staff for the, uh. Excellent work they did on York Boulevard and the other calls they take. They don't get recognized a lot except for formal emails, but these are people that. Just want to let the word get out. So I'm just letting you know on behalf of, uh, a lot of people in our neighborhood, chiefs that they really appreciate and notice what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Norrie. Well said, uh, Deputy Mayor Calvert.
I want to echo those words, uh, from Counselor Norrie. Um, I was at the fire scene. Uh, shortly after it took place and just kind of sat back in awe and watched our, uh. Our fire team work in conjunction with Loyalist and Kingston. And to sit back and see, I mean, we don't get fires like that every day in Nappany, and thank God we don't. Um, but to see the professionalism and to see everybody working together, it was just, it was mind-boggling. Um, I got to speak with, uh, chief later on in the morning and, uh, I watched, you know, watched him take control and, and giving commands. While carrying a conversation on me, just like, it's just like, it's just no big deal, you know, we're just out here, I'll just, you know, lower that hose a little bit, lose this little bit. Chief Hammond, I, I, I'm still, I, I can't, I can't thank you guys enough for everything you do. Um, it just blows my mind, and I just want to thank everybody that was involved. We had. Every department in our, in our municipality working on some form or aspect of this, uh, of this traumatic fire we had. And, uh, it was just, just amazing to sit back and watch. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert, uh, Counsel Penal.
I think you worship. Yes, I want to get on this, uh, thanking emergency server fire, uh, services and, and, uh, you know, Kingston and Loyalist as well. One thing I want to point out to people is that it, it's not just the building, and it was not just a fire in the building. It was what, what our services did to prevent. Housing from going up and other buildings on the fairboard, on the fairgrounds. Last weekend, those buildings were filled up with boats and motorhomes and cars and things like that. To have that building go up the way that it did, and not even the curling club that was right next door to it be damaged. That, there's a lot to be said for that, and, and I take my hat off to, uh, to thank everybody that worked on that, uh, staff. And, and everybody is the professionalism, and you know something, we're that far away, we're, our, we're that close. That having something huge happen here. So this is where I take pride in supporting our, our fire services. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Penal. Counselor Hicks, you're looking at grabbing your microphone. Go ahead.
Through you, your worship. I would be remiss if I didn't add my thanks to that. Um, and as the mayor said earlier, it wasn't just a building. It was a whole lot of memories for a whole lot of people, and, um, it's gonna be missed, but I really do think that. Just seeing everyone pull together to prevent further damage, there's no reason why people can't pull together to make. And a new space for new memories. So, thanks again, chief, and your staff as well.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Hicks and, uh, Counsel Shank.
Been there, done that, seen that, and, uh. Being on the fire department, but Bill, as you well know, that's what you guys were trained on, and you're reading smoke and all the things when you. When I was on the fire department, what you've taught us, and it's really good when you do with a Tuesday night, or I believe it's still Tuesday night. The practices and the training, that all the volunteers and all the full-time and what they do. So it starts, uh, basically. It's like a hockey team. If you're not practicing and the way you're going and how they have an efficient business. And if you have a chief that is calm, cool, collected, it makes everybody else calm, cool, collected, and very well done. My heart was broken that, that morning when I heard about it, because of my, the amount of history, exactly what the mayor has stated. As we got older, I went from the beginning, when we used to go to the Comets Games, a lot of the younger ones probably didn't remember that. And Tar Brady and all the other guys that used to play as a child when going, watching those games. And for me playing through there, and as I got older, playing after the Raiders games, pick up. Uh, there was a lot of history there. So, uh, that's something you can't get back, but, uh, kudos to the fire department and everybody else that they did. And, uh, they did a great job. Thank goodness we had center blocks on the side and everything else. But, uh, if they didn't act and the way they did act, you know, uh, could have been a lot worse, but, uh, thank you also.
Thank you. Thank you all of council for, uh, Counsel Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have to weigh in, in on this as well. Uh, sometimes we. Pick on Bill a little bit, I think. This time he gets all the accolades. No, I, I, I'm also very appreciative of our fire department. Bill's efforts, everybody's efforts in this. It was, uh, it's a shame to see that building go down like that. And, and I'm also appreciative of your efforts to try to get that, uh, time capsule out of there, even though you weren't successful with finding it yet. Uh, hopefully, we're gonna come up with something on that.
In time, we'll find it.
Anyways, I just want to weigh in on it and, uh. I really do appreciate, as I always say, there, the, you know, fire department is one of the most important things that we have in town that we have to. That we have to fund and look after, so, uh, but I am very, very appreciative of everybody's efforts in this. Thanks, Bill.
Through your worship.
Yep, go ahead, uh, Chief Hammond, go ahead.
Um, I know it's late and everybody wants to get out of here, but I, I would like to also echo your thanks, uh, to us, but. I have to, uh, thank the citizens who called 911. I have to thank the neighbors who evacuated. I have to thank everybody, uh, with the OPP EMS, the county. Um, we have utilized every single one of our departments, uh, as part of our team to be successful. In this, uh, evolution. Uh, both fires, uh, as you well know, and it's, they're, they're both suspicious and under investigation. Um, this, so I'll leave it at that. The office, the farm marshal has the, uh, has the lead as the investigating authority. Um, we're still there. We still have people helping out. This is going to be a couple of day and more event. Um, hats off to this community. We are all a team. We all came together. Um, and that's why we were successful in saving so much, uh, from the, uh, from the front of the building. We've also made the opera, uh, we've also given the, uh, the option to the sea cadets to use our fire hall in the interim to keep their core moving forward. So we're, we're, we're proud of what we did as a fire service, and I'm proud of the men and women who served with me that night, uh, and into the morning. Um, uh, it, they did it, and, uh, uh, big thanks to, uh, our new deputy, uh, James Feeny. He, uh, he stood on his head on the back of that building and made sure with his old crews from Loyalist that we didn't burn anything down back there. So, uh, thank you, folks.
with his old crews from Loyalist that we didn't burn anything down back there, so uh, thank you, folks.
Thank you, chief. Uh, like I say, I don't, I don't think words are enough to 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 thank the people that were involved in this thing to to keep our community safe, so thank you, and thank you, council, for recognizing uh the important work that they do. Um, I got to go in a little bit of a different direction here, and I just want to remind everybody that Halloween's coming up at the end of the month, and we probably won't have another sitting before uh Halloween Day, the the night of hooliganism, so I just wanted to make sure that people out there are uh being safe, have fun, and listen to your parents, so it it is to be a fun night, and and we really do need these kind of things in this community, so uh happy Halloween, everybody. Uh, next up is the forward calendar. I know we've all had an opportunity to look at it. Uh, is there anything on the forward calendar that anybody wants to to speak to? Seeing none, the uh council resolution tracker, is there anything on the council resolution tracker anybody wants to speak to? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to confirm the proceedings. Moved by uh Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no comments or questions or concern, read a first, second, and finally pass this twenty-fourth day of October twenty twenty-three. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried, and look for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concern, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, folks. It's been a very productive evening, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.